Good evening to the April 2nd New Market Town Council Meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of bookkeeping things. Councillor Pike will not be in attendance tonight. And we're very happy to have Councillor Pickering back. So, very happy to see you. Public forum. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? And if so, please come up. Come on up. Is this a threefer?
It is.
This is all three of us together.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Could you all announce your names, please?
Absolutely. Randy Schroeder from Seven Maple Crest.
I'm Rob Geyer from Darrell Drive.
Ellen Snyder from Johnson Drive.
And we are all part of the New Hampshire Listens Group that met this past Monday night, and I reported on it at the last council meeting two or three weeks ago. We just wanted to give you an update and inform you of some next steps in the process. We had a very productive meeting with six residents and myself and two facilitators from New Hampshire Listens Monday evening. And our next steps will be to invite the town council chair and the school board chair to meet with us in approximately two or three weeks. We need to get the schedules for the two facilitators to be part of this. And then we'll contact you to see when you're available for that along with the other six members of the New Hampshire Listens Group. So, we've had our first step, and that's our next step. Eventually, the circle will widen where we'll invite more and more townspeople. Eventually, a step would be where it would be approximately eighteen people divided up into three different discussion groups facilitated. And then after that, probably even much larger, maybe even, you know, say cafeteria-wide groups of many, many townspeople. So, down the road, the circle of discussion will expand, always facilitated by trained facilitators. Something that we got into on Monday was talking about the values of New Market, and that was one of the foundations for the facilitators. Some of the values that they came up with just really hit home for me, and why I like living in New Market. Our grit was one term. I don't know if that's an adjective or a noun, but maybe both. The small-town feel, a tremendous downtown community, interdependence, independence, a caring for each other, and some real working-class roots, among some other things. So, my two colleagues here will also have some other comments to make about New Hampshire Listens.
Go ahead, Ellen.
Yeah, so I want to thank Randy for bringing six of us together, who I don't think most of us, well, didn't know each other or didn't know each other well, at least I didn't. So, it was nice to meet some new folks in the community. And for me, I think it provides an opportunity for us to move forward as a community and come develop solutions together as a community. And this is just a sort of initial focus group with people from lots of different perspectives in different parts of town. And we're just getting to know each other and sharing who we are and what we care about the community, why we care about the community, and sort of starting to think about, well, what should this group, you know, help formulate and how should we move forward? And so, we, it was wide open, the discussion, but we came back to education, because that's obviously sort of the big issue in our community right now. And I think, at least for me, it was, you know, we almost need to step back and think about it more broadly again, in terms of what kind of education we want for students in our community, even, you know, sort of going back to that basic question and bringing everybody together forward in terms of a solution. So, I'm really excited that this might be a really great way to do that. And I think, as Randy said, this is just a small group right now, but I know most, all of us want this to expand out to the entire community as soon as possible to engage everybody in the conversation, so.
Yeah, and I don't have a lot to add. I think one of the things that was probably most positive for me about the experience to start off with was the incredible diversity of opinion that was around the table. But the common shared interest in actually moving towards solution and common ground and trying to figure out how to move forward. And I think as that circle widens, the diversity gets bigger, but the common ground also gets bigger, and that'll be a really productive thing for us as we move along. And we did just get joined by one more.
No.
Ditto.
So.
So, as I said, our next steps will be to invite Councillor Levy and School Board Chairwoman Wentworth for a meeting with us in just a few weeks. We understand that the school board is much more the center of moving forward in terms of school issues, but we wanted to have a conversation with the town council, along with the Budget Committee eventually, as well as the school board. So, thank you for having us tonight. Any questions?
Anyone?
Two things, real quick. Could you just let us know who was participating? I saw the notes, but I never saw the name.
Sure. Ellen Snyder, Rob Geyer, who's in the audience here, Heather Robb.
Lisa Henderson.
Lisa Henderson, and Eric Wilgoat were the six members, along with myself. And the two facilitators, Bruce Mallory and Michelle Holt Shannon, who work with New Hampshire Listens, and they're based at the Carcy Institute at the University of New Hampshire.
So, I love the fact that there's a bunch of names there that I've generally heard around debate, but not actually sitting up here. No offense, it's people that have sat up in elected positions before, but that it's like that there's a lot of energy in the community, not just with the individuals that tend to habitually end up on balance. So, I think that's awesome. So, thank you all for that. So, one last thing. I totally, well, another few things I remember from high school chemistry is the Heisenberg uncertainty principle, that as soon as you observe something, it changes it. So, given that, is there any thought to, like, the sessions being televised or recorded or some way for other people in the community to hear what's going on? Or at least the notes? I saw the notes through, like, social media. So, like, is there a way, some formal way, at least for the notes of what's happening?
Absolutely. And that's a real good point. There are a number of people who reacted to that first meeting being closed, like it was meant to be secret and not transparent, and there was no intention at all for that. We met in the New Market Town Library. This next meeting, we decided should be open, so if people want to observe and see. I don't think we figured out if, you know, we'll invite comments into that. We really want this to be a discussion of the core group facilitated, and the dynamics would change a lot if suddenly anybody in the audience could just add anything. Eventually, that will definitely happen. That will be a much wider discussion. So, the next meeting will be open. I suspect will be at the town library in the larger room, and observers can come and watch the process and then talk about it with us afterwards.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Glenn, would you like to add anything?
I'd say that all.
Thank you. So, maybe one more thing is that it's my understanding, at least the first meeting, and I anticipate all these next meetings, if it's just a smaller group or expanded smaller group, we're not deciding anything. We're just exploring ideas together and how we might move forward as a community and what may be broad topics we might want help the community can explore. So, we're not deciding anything. This is obviously just exploratory concept and trying to move forward.
Yeah. Yeah, I totally, totally agree and understand that. It's just, I mean, I saw the notes, and I was like, there are a lot of things here that resonate with me. I'm like, I really wish I'd watched this meeting. It just looked like a lot of exciting ideas are coming up.
Sure.
This is, and I just want to clarify that this is not a town entity or an official governmental body, so no minutes need to be taken, no televised of the meetings, nothing official like other boards. This has nothing to do with any governmental entity in the town. That's the disclaimer.
And my only response is, I'm one of seven councillors. So, albeit the fact that I'm the chair, I'm frankly not sure that I'm going to participate. I think the school board is the primary facilitator from my standpoint until someone tells me otherwise. And if other councillors here, you know, frankly want to participate, I would not have a problem with that. But I don't, frankly, being singled out as the chair, which I appreciate, we're all equal here. So, you know, if I'm invited, I would assume anyone from the council would be invited. And, you know, I, the only thing I'll say is, I'm a big believer in process. And I think the school board, right now, is probably trying to put some procedures in place and a process by which they're going to address the facilities and whatnot. And I sort of feel like I respect that process. So, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Chair. I think for now, we'll address communication to you if you'd like to designate an alternate to come in your place, if you see that fit. We just want to keep the communication open. I understand that the town council is secondary in terms of the school issue, per se, but we want everybody to be aware of what's happening and be as transparent as we can be.
Well, I sort of said what my thought is.
Sure.
If you're inviting me, I would assume that any of the councillors, if they are interested, they could participate. It's fine with me.
Okay.
I don't feel like it's appropriate for me to designate one over anybody else. So, I'll leave it at that.
Well, I think part of it is, we didn't want to have a next meeting with, like, four or five new people. So, I can invite all of you and expect that one person would come for now. Just procedurally, what would you suggest?
By inviting the entire council, that becomes an official meeting, and thus we need to keep minutes and post a meeting.
Got it.
And follow those laws.
Okay.
Would it be acceptable if councillors that were interested contacted either him or you, CCU or?
It's fine with me.
As long as a quorum is not present.
Excellent.
Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Michael, I apologize. I didn't see that button.
On the right to know, from pages sixteen to twenty, it states what our positions really are as a town council, and we run, help run the town, and nothing with the school. I don't want to step in the school personally at all. I'd rather hear from the school tomorrow night or whenever in the future, whatever the chair and their board decides, that then they could come to us if they need our help at all. I think they probably already have a plan in place, and I'd rather wait and see what's happening with that. I just don't think that we should get involved with anything to do with the school at this time. That's my opinion.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that. We will have members of this first group at the school board meeting tomorrow night and written communication to them as well.
Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Weinstein.
I just wanted to say that my understanding of the process wasn't that this group was going to come up with a solution to the school problem. It was about bringing people from the community together and encouraging communication and facilitating communication within our community, which is something that's been lacking. And I would hope that everyone could participate in that. And I think that they should. So, I appreciate the offer to, for us to participate. And should we contact the New Hampshire Listens, should we contact you guys directly if, as a councillor, if we're interested in being a part of the process?
I'm the principal organizer right now, and then share that with the rest of the group, so you can contact me directly. And you'll have my, I think you already have my email and phone number.
That would be my suggestion.
Yeah. Yeah, but let's do that. And if I could just respond to one part of what you said, I don't think we have the intention of coming up with a solution, but working with the school board and to whatever extent the town council sees fit or, and/or the Budget Committee or any other group to move this process forward. And I think there's a healing element to this as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, do I have someone who could make a motion to accept the minutes for March seventeenth organizational meeting? I thought, I thought we didn't accept that. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Weinstein. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Councillor Wright?
Abstain.
Councillor Pickering?
Abstain, absent.
Councillor Nazaro?
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein?
Aye.
Abstain.
Councillor Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero to three.
Next on the agenda, minutes of March nineteenth meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those?
Councillor Weinstein got it. I'll second.
I actually had a change, but my computer just went dead. So, I don't know if I can, let's try to open it up again. Let's see. Think I blew up? Should I just start it again?
Plug that back in, see what happens.
Hold on one second, folks. It won't take long. Here we go. There was one small change, if I can just get there. On page ten of the minutes, second paragraph, the paragraph that starts in regard, I was speaking about having reached out last year to the chair of the school board, who at the time was chairperson Looney. And then she resigned for personal reasons, and then things got busy, if I'm recalling my statements. And we never really circled back. And so, when I spoke about reaching out to the new chair this year, that's what I meant, just for clarification. And that is my only change. Do you want to call, if everybody else is fine, please call the roll.
Councillor Wright?
Abstain, absent.
Councillor Pickering?
Abstain, absent.
Councillor Nazaro?
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein?
Aye.
Councillor Carmichael?
Aye.
Councillor Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes four, zero to two.
Next on the agenda is the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, not on my report is that I just want to give you guys an update. We've been monitoring the Lamprey River for the last few days. It has been over the flood stage for about a day and a half, and it's expected to remain so until tomorrow. It is going down. Flood stage is at eight feet. It's currently, it was at nine feet most of this morning, and it's down to about eight point three feet right now. To compare, last Wednesday at this time is at three feet. So, all the rain and the melt is getting into the river. We did open up all of the gates on the dam on Monday to prepare for this. It was difficult because it was frozen still from the winter. There was some really large chunks of ice in there. I went down to observe. But everything is doing as we can and just hoping it'll go down soon, which it seems like it is. So, just want to give the council an update on that. On my written report, the town council has received notes from Comcast that would like to renew its cable franchise in the community. While the agreement does not expire till 2016, in accordance with the Cable Communication Act of nineteen eighty-four, they must initiate the formal proceedings at this time to preserve their rights. However, the cable company in the town usually able to complete negotiations within formal sessions. I've sent information to Town's Telecom Attorney, which now is the Town's law firm, and they're going to be reviewing the information that we have on file. And I have a letter that I'm going to be giving to the council when their mailbox is outlining what the process is. And as you'll see on the agenda for committees, I am asking for a council rep to serve on a negotiation committee of maybe three people in the community to sit down and discuss this with Comcast. The next item is that, it was brought to my attention that there are concerns over campaigners impeding voters coming into the polls, not only at this last election, but various elections. I'm working on a draft election ordinance, and the town clerk, tax collector, and town moderator have reviewed it and are making some recommendations prior, that will the council be able to act on and put in place prior to the September primary. This includes such thing as making sure that there's a safe passage for all voters to come in without feeling intimidated or harassed by individuals trying to campaign out front of the building, as well as making sure that, you know, electioneering doesn't happen inside the polls and what can happen inside the polls. And it'll be an ordinance which would, could include up to a $1,000 fine under state law. So, we are working on that and chokes that to the council shortly. I was asked by a council to get the budget calendar out early, so we don't run into situation like last year, where we're running out of time and you don't have full council to review the budget on some sessions. With that being said, I'd ask the council to pencil in Saturday, October twenty-fifth, Wednesday, October twenty-ninth, and November first as tentative dates for budget workshops. I know it's far ahead, but just wanted to make sure.
Can you forward us an email?
I will. And this, last week, Councillor Weinstein met with all the department heads and myself for an orientation session. It was similar to the session I presented to the council as a whole last year. I included a copy of the PowerPoint presentation just for the entire council, just as a fresh of right to know law, and some of the other items. It seems like there's a lot of confusion out there, what the role of the council is and what the role of the town administrator is and what the role of other boards in the community are. The way I always put it is that the board of directors of the town is the town council, the legislative body, as well as the governing body of the town. They hire a chief administrative officer to run the town on a day-to-day basis. That's the town administrator, my seat. The shareholders, in our situation, only votes on the budget, which is the town meeting. On the, the council.
They also vote on the board of directors.
And they vote on the board of directors. Thank you. And the council, though, I think there's confusion on what oversight they have on other boards in the community, such as the school board, which they have none. The school department is a completely autonomous governing entity, as well as the planning board, which is a separately-elected board that the council only adopts the laws for the planning, but does not approve planning projects. So, I think there's a lot of confusion out there. One idea that I've been thinking about today is I may offer what I'd call a citizens academy for one night, which would basically go through our former, invite citizens in, have a pre-sign up, and go through our government and say this, and they can ask questions and just be able to explain it. We'll televise it and play it again so people can see it and put it on the web so they can see it at other times. It's just, especially with the new charter coming in, it can also tie it in there so they understand what's going on with that as well. In addition, I know traditionally that the town attorney comes in just to the council to discuss the right to know law. I think it would be more beneficial to have all boards sit with the attorney to discuss the right to know law, because it affects every board the same. And I've talked to the superintendent of schools and invited the school board to be able to sit in, because it's the same for the schools. And the town attorney and I are working up a presentation that would be, one night, we'll invite all the boards in to have a session, and they can, you know, question and answers, and we'll run through different scenarios to see, you know, what-ifs kind of situations. Like, I know I did that in the presentation, and so we tried to do the same thing. And that's all I have to say, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Any questions? Councillor Weinstein?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say thank you to Steve and to all the department heads who were, who made themselves available for the day, for the morning. And then, you know, I met with Chief Sier individually and with Rick Malaski and working to meet with Sean to where the waste fire treatment man. So, I appreciated it, and it was very helpful. So, thank you.
Just later, Sean wasn't able to get back to you today, because we did have a sewer break in.
Well, he got back to me.
Didn't go?
Yeah.
Okay. We did have a sewer break today, so he was working on.
Anyone else? This is, in order, not probably the same thing, but since you brought it up, meaning it's not on the agenda at this moment, but since we're not, since most of the role of the councillor is really for our benefit.
Yeah.
There were just a couple of comments I thought I would make, since I reread the role of the councillor. And on page nineteen, you know, it does define, you know, how we should interact with one another, which I think we do a pretty good job of. I did want to ask, though, how would you define disagree without being disagreeable? It just caught my, sort of hit my funny bone.
Traditionally, it's.
We've had some debates.
The way you look at it is this. You may vote, you may not agree with each other here. You may vote no.
Yeah.
And one vote yes. Don't take it outside the meeting. Don't, you know, don't try to, it's not, sometimes it's not always personal, the way people vote, it's just an opinion.
Yeah, okay.
So, that's usually the disagree without being disagreeable.
I see. And then the only other thing I was going to mention is, on page twenty-three, I thought it did a nice job. It's obvious, maybe to some, but just for those out there who have asked some questions of us, you know, the ordinance are laws adopted by the council and resolutions or policies or positions taken by the council. And I, I think that orientation that you're talking about doing with the town or folks from the town is a really good idea, because I think, I think there's a wide array of opinions of just what, you know, we can and can't do. So, you know, I think that would be a good thing.
Absolutely. And just to add, I mean, there's still confusion on, we're not a town, we're not a border selectmen town, and we're not a city, or somewhere between, and that's the confusion that's out there. And it's a very rare form of government in New Hampshire. So, I think, I think that probably the best is try to do a sit-down, invite people and ask questions.
Yeah. Well, you're doing, just as a side note, you know, one example, we have an EDC committee.
Yep.
So, the EDC, you know, we have eleven people, Phil's on it, I'm on it, variety of citizens. We may take a position, right? We bring it to the council, the council may not agree with it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but a lot of folks seem to think if the EDC takes a position, that's, you know, town law, so to speak, or the direction we're going. So, you know, there's a lot of layers, you know, and some, you know, it might be good to distinguish between the boards that have authority to do by RSA, like the planning board, versus, you know, committees that are more advisory.
Right.
That would be a good distinction to make. And anyway, as obvious as that may sound, I think it probably isn't. Councillor Pickering?
This is a different subject, back to the dam situation. The gates are open. How long are you going to leave the gates open?
We're going to wait till, I've got to talk with the public works director. He was saying till the water, the level drops to a significant amount, or if we continue to get rain, which it sounds like we are on Friday.
Sounds like we have.
Probably just leave it open.
We barely started into that, and probably not a bad idea.
Yeah, leave it open. Just so you know, we get, the United States Geological Survey sends us messages every hour on what the level of the river is after it hits flood stage. So, we're monitoring it throughout the day and the night. My phone will go off and it'll tell me exactly what the level is, so.
So, is this something new?
Yeah. It's a lot easier, it's very helpful, because we can monitor it a lot easier, too. And their website actually has a graph of what our normal is and where we are, and so you just pull it up real easy.
Sounds like a good plan to me. Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none, move to the next agenda item. Under new business, do I have a motion to appoint a town council rep for the planning board?
Should we? Trustee of the trust fund?
Oh, yes, it was a revised one. There should be.
I didn't.
You know what? Yeah, I didn't.
I didn't get that.
There was a revised one, there's a trustee of the trust fund.
Oh, was that added to this list?
Yes, and I don't have.
Was that, was that in lieu of the veterans committee?
Yeah.
No. It's a different.
We had, yeah, we had a recommendation, we had a request that Joyce Russell to be reappointed to the.
How come I get the memos I'm not supposed to get? But I don't get the memo.
It was, it was an addition after. Joyce Russell to, for term to expire March two thousand seventeen, to serve as a trustee of the trust fund. She previously served.
Can I make the nomination so I can start discussion? Yeah, I nominate Joyce Russell for term to expire March two thousand seventeen, trustee of the trust fund. Question. That is an elected position. Do we nominate the individual? Does the trustees, should they be the ones that are doing this?
No, the RSA says the council appoints the trustee.
Can we, do we appoint them for a term that the elected official would have gotten had the town elected? Or do we only appoint them for a year until the next ballot comes up?
Appoint, you appoint them till the next election.
So, this should be a term to expire March two thousand fifteen?
Yeah.
I amend my nomination to a term to expire March two thousand fifteen.
Was that just, just so?
She didn't sign up until?
She didn't sign up until.
Okay, that's, so we had no one really.
Right, nobody filed.
Got it.
But she did put in, I saw she put a letter in.
Yeah.
So, under those circumstances, obviously, we nominate to get through the year and then, okay. I just, not that it's worth belaboring, but if the trustees didn't, weren't happy with a particular individual that is here, that's it?
No recourse, no, the council points.
Got it, okay. So, do we need to, you amended it, do you want to second the amendment?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Pickering?
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Can I now go to the planning board?
Yeah.
Can I have a motion for someone for the planning board rep? Counsel Carmichael?
I'd like to nominate Counselor Wright.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Nazaro. Anyone else? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Pickering?
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
And I also need a nomination for a rep for the budget committee. Does anyone want to make a nomination? Counsel Carmichael?
I nominate Counsel Pike.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
That was a, that was a, we'll give that to Counsel Pickering, because it's right there. Anyone else? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Pickering?
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
And do we need to do that for the CIP, or do I just name the CIP?
Disappointed.
Okay. So, should I just go through the list?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I've discussed this with some councillors, either verbally or via email. Counsel Nazaro is going to be serving on, I'm just going to go through the whole list, the CIP committee. Conservation is going to be Counsel Weinstein. Economic development will be Counsel Nazaro and myself. The highway safety committee will be Counsel Carmichael. The advisory heritage committee will be Counsel Pickering. And did we ever get a determination on the Veterans Trust Committee?
It wasn't in last year's minutes.
There's never been a numbing, I just happened to be on it.
It just happened to be, and there wasn't sure, so...
Okay, so we'll just cross that out for now. I was going to, I was going to ask Counsel Nazaro, and he's already on it.
Yeah, I'm already the vice chair.
And as far as the cable franchise, I appointed myself, because I figured it wasn't going to take up too much time, Steve said, and who knows, maybe I can help negotiate a little. And those are the committees. Anyone have any questions or comments? And other than that, we have one resolution tonight on page twenty-eight, and I will read it. Actually, we already...
No, I'd read by title only, because it's a bunch of numbers for the...
Yeah, well, did we, is this, was this the first, I thought, for some reason, I thought we already read the ambulance.
No, this is the first reading.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to accept...
It's the first reading, so there's no motion, right?
Oh.
Yeah.
So, I'll just read it. The town of Newmarket by the Newmarket Town Council Resolution two thousand thirteen fourteen dash fifty-five relating to the ambulance rates. And do you want me to read it other than the rates? Whereas a town in Newmarket charges its ambulance service pursuant to a menu of services, and whereas many changes in healthcare laws have prompted insurance companies and billing agencies to streamline billing practices, and whereas changes to the ambulance rates are recommended as, and there's a litany of different charges, now therefore be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council approved the bundled rate charges above and to authorize a town administrator to sign rate change forms as required. And it's a first reading. And we normally don't discuss first readings, but I feel I should give you a heads-up. Maybe you can give us some kind of explanation as to why these rates went up between forty and fifty percent?
Yeah, you will.
Because there, and because there's going to be some sticker shock if anybody needs to use an ambulance.
And one of them is that they haven't gone up in a long time.
Okay. Well, I'm just, you know, it sort of struck me. So, I figured I'd allow you to prepare. And other than that, correspondence to town council, did anyone get any correspondence? I did, just for the record, I got a correspondence from a constituent, as I think everyone on the council did. It was either last time or this time, a questionnaire from, I believe, Nicole Benson. And for the record, I had a nice discussion with Nicole yesterday. We did catch up. And I discussed some of the questions and some of the things that were on her mind, just so everyone knows. And that was pretty much the only correspondence that I received. Counsel Nazaro?
I was just, this is not correspondence, this is for new, for council comments.
Yes.
Is there any way that we can put resolutions that are in the first reading, and like, something on the homepage, like a link to it, so people can just, as opposed to digging for packets, see resolutions that are in between their first and second reading and just pull it off? Because like this here, right?
I'll see what I can do, but it's going to, don't expect it for the next meeting.
I'm not, I'm not asking for the next meeting. I'm just saying, I'm looking at this and like, you know, we're obviously not going to read twenty lines of rates here.
Yeah.
But like, for people, as opposed to being like, having to go three clicks deep to find what, a resolution that we're about to vote on, to be able to see that the resolutions we're going to vote on in the next meeting as a single click on the homepage, to me seems to be...
It won't be on the homepage. They'll be on the council page or below. I just don't want everybody to think...
Somewhere, somewhere less buried than where they sit today.
Yeah. I'll see what we can do.
Yeah. You know, that, actually, that would be a nice thing, I think, in general, if there was like, like when it says town council meeting, and then if there was a little something under it that said resolutions, they could click on that, just so people had a heads-up. Because, you know, a lot of people, let's face it, don't watch every meeting. I, you know, I wouldn't have thought about any of these rates unless I saw them in front of me.
Yeah.
And to dig through the packet, to your point, if this had been a hundred-page packet, it would have been like, nobody would have, you know. So, I think that's a good idea, frankly. Anyone else have any closing comments or anything to add? This may be a record, by the way. Counsel Pickering?
I just want to take a quick moment, I will promise not to bore too many people, but I just have to get this off my chest and out of my heart, that the people who were overwhelming with me, with my surgery that I had recently, I tried to keep it a family affair, and it's a small town, been involved here for about thirty-five years